As far as you're concerned, right?
Right.
All right. No problem. There you go. Folks, I can have your attention. I'd like to call the Planning Commission meeting together for August 23rd, 2022. I'm Kevin Jeffries, Chairman of the Planning Commission, and I'd like to ask you if you have a cellphone with you, please either turn it off or turn it on, vibrate, so that it doesn't interfere with the cameras here in the courtroom. Before we get started, if you would, join me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the Republic of Georgia, one nation, one government, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, thank you all. And before we get started with our dockets this morning, I would like to introduce our newest board member, Tom Marsh. He's at the far end down here. He's representing the city of Ogrange, replacing Brandon Smith. So just, I think you told me you work for Eastman, and so welcome aboard, and we're a pretty good group to get along with most of the time.
Welcome aboard, sir.
Welcome aboard, so. All right, before, let's see here, I guess, before we get into the minutes, I'd just like to quickly outline what this hearing is today. It is a continuance from our, I guess it was our May 24th hearing, and what we have agreed on the procedure for time allocation for the Planning Commission is we will have presentation by the applicant and those in support of the, of these dockets, but it would be traffic information only today. That will be allowed 20 minutes for the applicant, then we'll have testimony by those opposing the traffic information only, 20 minutes. rebuttal evidence across examination by the applicant will be allowed 10 minutes. Rebuttal evidence across examination by the opponent, 10 minutes, and then final statement of opposition, five minutes, and final statement of the applicant, five minutes. So that's what the procedure that we're going to follow today. As most folks know, noticed, Jim Urban is not here today. He's a little under the weather, so Ryan will be, I guess, heading up things here today. So maybe he's come back to kind of help us if we need a little help. So thank you, Amy. So with that, Commissioners, if you would, let's take a look at our minutes from our July 26th meeting. If I could, I'd like to get a motion to Mr. Have, yes, sir. Yes, okay, have a second? Okay, any, sir? All right, now, do we have any additions or corrections to the minutes? Any additions or corrections? We've got a pretty several pages here. Looks like about 11 pages of minutes from last month. So any additions that we need to make or corrections? Okay, seeing none. Looks like the sage, you know, we did a good job of putting the minutes together, I think. So, all right, with that, all those in favor of approving the minutes as submitted signify by saying aye. All opposed, no. Okay, minutes from our July 26th meeting have been approved. All right, and before we get into our first two dock, or our two docketed items today, I'd like to get staff sworn in, okay?
Do you solemnly swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Thank you. And with that, if you would, let's read the two docketed items that we have today as of, with this continuance? Mm-hmm, yes.
Docket PZ 22-014, application has been filed by Clayton Properties Group Incorporated for the approval of zoning map aden amendment on approximately 109.4 acres. The property is located at 5601 and 5621 South Highway 1694, Schuler Lane, Prospect. The proposed change is from AG-1 Agriculture Residential District to R2 Residential District, continued from May 24th, 2022. Docket PZ 22-015, application has been filed by Clayton Properties Incorporated for the approval of a preliminary subdivision plan for 187 lots on approximately 109.4 acres to be known as Sanctuary Falls Phase Two. The property is located at 5601 and 5621 South Highway 1694, Schuler Lane, Prospect. The proposed zoning is R2 Residential District, continued from May 24th, 2022.
All right, thank you. And with that, Mr. Fisher, if you would, come up and just kind of reintroduce folks to what we are considering here today on the traffic.
All right, thank you very much. Ryan Fisher, Senior Planner with Oldham County Planning and Development. As Commissioner Jeffrey stated, this is a continuance from that May hearing, and so a few things that each of the Commissioners have been provided in their packets. I have included the May, original May packet, the staff report from that. Obviously, the only change to that would be in those proposed binding elements of that being heard at the hearing today, as you see on that first note. The other things that are in there are the transportation analysis that has been updated and revised as of July 27th, 2022. There's emails in there as well from KYTC and Beth Stuber from Louisville Metro Government, and then there is an updated set of plans for Sanctuary Falls Phase Two. So all those have been given to you all. If anybody doesn't happen to have one and I miss somebody, let me know, and I will grab it to you. But I believe everybody has been provided those, and just want to put those in there for the record.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Solomon, County Engineer, he's going to provide us additional information also.
Yes, thank you. Christie, can you activate the overhead? And if you recall from the May, the May hearing, this one, this traffic information is unique in that Kentucky Highway 61, 1694 is the state's jurisdiction, and a couple hundred feet of Schuler Lane and the intersection at 1694 is actually Metro Louisville Government. So the county doesn't actually have jurisdiction over those areas, but in our due diligence, we've been keeping in correspondence with those agencies to ensure that they're reviewing the updates and the plans to verify that they also concur with what's, what's occurring. I have gotten a more recent letter from Beth Stuber at Metro Louisville indicating their approval, and I'll just place it here. And Christie, I can provide an electronic copy of this for our files. So Metro, through my email conversations and this letter, has approved the TIS, the updated TIS, and the current plans as approved. Similarly, coordination with KYTC has resulted in the same, that they have reviewed this and concur with the plan. I think you'll, you'll be presented later. We are aware of a right-of-way or property issue that's been brought to light, and the state is aware of that. We've talked to them about it, and they're, they still are approving the permit that they've issued and the plans and the TIS, considering that.
Okay, thank you, sir. All right, with that, we'll now move into the presentation for the applicant and those in support of this application for traffic information only. And Mr. Talbot, you have 20 minutes.
While Mr. Talbot is getting up, I, he and I discussed this just moments ago. I mean, obviously, what Mr. Solomon just talked about has to do with the roadway and the intersection. And I think that he and I intended that, that traffic means the roadway and the intersection as well. So, you know, we're not just going to discuss, I don't think, Mrs. Zimmerman's traffic study, is that, and, and we agree on that. Is that correct?
As my recollection is when we met, when we talked about traffic, I think we even cleared it up at the time that meant the road issues for the intersection, right, was really what the issue was. So, yeah.
Thank you. I just wanted to make sure we're clear about that.
All right. Yes, sir. And if you, you have anybody that we speaking on your behalf today?
Two. We're going to have Diane Zimmerman, Eric Sun, and probably a Joe Pousatieri.
Get everybody sworn in at once, if we could, Ms. Edgar.
Do you solemnly swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
All righty.
Thank you. Mr. Chairman, if I could, could we possibly have my time start when, now, as opposed to being a minute behind?
It'd be fine.
Thank you very much.
Just a moment, if you would.
Uh, no, I don't need the presentation. I am, Chrissy, I'm going to use the overhead projector to, for most of my presentation on this, 20 minutes. John Talbot, 1,000 North Hurstborn Parkway, Louisville, Kentucky, 40223. First of all, I want to thank you all very much for your time. We've been out in front of you all a bundle of times on this case. I think we were scheduled to come in March. We were asked by staff to, to postpone that and have an updated neighborhood meeting to update the, the neighbors in there, particularly on Schuler Lane and Hidden Creek, about our changes to the intersection that we're here for today. We did that, and so that delayed us, and we came back in April. When we came back in April, we were asked by fellow counsel, Mr. Baxter, if we could reschedule to the next month because Diane Zimmerman was not available. And we agreed to that. We understood that they had a right to cross-examine her, and that was fine. Then we came in May, and there was additional issues that came up. And so now here we are in August. So I think this may be the longest, one of the longer cases that you've ever been, I think, to take us really far back in history. We had our first neighborhood meeting, and we went to TRC over a year ago. And so we're hoping to get a decision of a recommendation of approval today, and we very much appreciate your all's time, and it's my privilege to be here in front of you all today. One of the things that I wanted to mention is, with all those extensions and continuances and so forth, second neighborhood meetings, we have always at LEAP been here about transparency. We have always been here about fairness and full disclosure. That is exactly what our purpose has been. We're very proud of our plan. We're very proud of the road improvements that we are making, and we think those are sufficient to recommend approval of our project today. At the May meeting, there was lots of questions that came up about the traffic and so forth, and I'm going to cover all that. But one of the things that I think I really wanted to, to mention, we have, there's been lots of questions raised by Norton Commons. If you'll recall, there were two witnesses that testified at the original case, Joe Gottbrath, and also the president of the Hidden Creek HOA. Both of them were completely in favor of our project, and those are truly impacted stakeholders on this development. What is Norton Commons? They're a stakeholder for sure, but primarily they're a business competitor. And we think that the actions that they have made, and we also think that their case in opposition really is nothing more than a thinly veiled attempt to squelch competition, to retain a monopoly that they have. That is not in the interest of Oldham County, and I would ask you to keep that in front of you all as we go through the questions today. With that, I would like to call, when we came here last time, Mr. Baxter had done his case in chief. He did it primarily with the testimony of Mr. Agent, their expert, and also the cross-examination of Diane Zimmerman. So kind of to bring you back on to where we are, that's what I'm going to do. I'm going to call Mr. Agent, their expert, first. Mr. Agent, you can come up and share the podium with me, sir.
Well, we'll need to get you sworn in, if I could, Ms. Edgar.
Do you solemnly swear to tell the truth, the whole truth? Oh, you need to raise your right hand. Do you solemnly swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Mr. Agent, hi, thank you very much. I'm John Talbot. I think we met briefly back in May, and thank you for coming back today. It's my understanding-
Start it, Mr. Talbot. Let me get his name and address for the record.
Thank you.
Kenneth Agent, 3265 Blenheim Way, Lexington, Kentucky.
Continue.
Agent, I think when you testified originally, you had prepared a report dated May of 2022. Is that correct?
Yes, it is.
And since then, you have supplemented it, and I'm not sure Barry has submitted it, but I know he will if he has not, and supplemented that dated August of this year. Is that correct?
Yes, it is.
Okay, and in those reports, particularly the first report, you refer to the Oldham County Regulations for Road Design, Jefferson County Regulations, and also the KYTC Regulations. Is that right?
Right.
And in fact, as Mr. Solomon said, this intersection is solely in Jefferson County and a state road, not Oldham County. Is that correct?
So I understand it, yes.
That's right. And so the, the regulations that we're really looking at are KYTC Regulations in Jefferson County. Is that correct?
That, plus general national regulations that say the same thing. They're all consistent as, as far as the angle of them, of the angle between the intersections, which I think was what we're getting at.
Very good. And, but the ultimate authority, as Mr. Solomon indicated, because it's not an Oldham County jurisdiction, is Jefferson County and the state, KYTC, correct?
The two entities that control that intersection, I understand, yes.
And are you aware that we have received, or that we sent, updated traffic figures to KYTC in Jefferson County on the basis of some of the issues that arose in May?
I'm not, I don't know everything has been sent. I know several changes made in the-
Just a little bit.
Several changes made in the, in the traffic impact studies.
Sure, very good. And as a result of that, are you aware that KTC, we received this email today, I'm sorry, yesterday afternoon, that indicated after KYTC has reviewed our new traffic numbers, that they have, their permit approval has remained unchanged from before?
Well, obviously, I haven't seen that, but I, I see it now.
Very good. And you don't have any reason to dispute that, correct?
I have no reason to dispute that email, no.
Very good. And we also, I think Mr. Solomon had put up, for everyone to see, the letter from Beth Stuber with Jefferson County. And have you seen this letter? This was sent to you. We received this yesterday, and I sent this to Mr. Baxter. Have you seen this letter?
Saw about 15 minutes ago.
Okay, and so you're aware that Jefferson County additionally has reiterated their approval of the intersection design at Schuler Lane and 1694, correct?
I can read it, yes. They talk about design exceptions. So I, I see the letter. I don't totally understand what they're talking about as far as what design exception. There's a big process that, that you go through when you have design exceptions. I haven't seen that.
Have you ever, have you ever designed a road that's been built?
Not myself, no. I've been involved in many of that, Bayway in that. I did a whole report, research report on the whole aspect of design exceptions.
So, but you've never designed a road and actually taken it through the process for approval with KTC then, correct?
No.
Are you aware of the exceptions and variances that KYTC is permitted to make?
As I just mentioned, if you look at my CV, you'll see I did a whole research study on the whole issue of design exceptions. And I'm very familiar with the whole process that you go through. It's a very elaborate process, which I've seen none of.
And you can see the, the report from Beth Stuber, Jefferson County, where she states in that letter that with existing roadway, sometimes it's impossible to achieve all of the current design standards, and effectively, exceptions have to be made, correct?
I understand that, but just talk about something different here. I got to answer to explain my, the answer. I get into this a lot. Explain my answer in border claims cases, where somebody, they're having an accident on a state road, and they'll try to apply it to today's standards to a road that was built eight years ago. And my answer's always been, right, you can't apply today's standards to a road that was built eight years ago. But that's not the situation we have here. We're reconstructing this road. So when you reconstruct the road, we're reconstructing this intersection. I'm, I'm talking about this intersection. You're reconstructing the intersection. So when you reconstruct the intersection, you do apply today's standards. I'm not saying you apply it to, you know, it doesn't exist, you've got to exist the intersection, and it reconstructs it. That's the difference. That's, that's the issue I have with that statement. I don't understand that statement. Because it's not existing, it's reconstructing.
Okay, very good. So you disagree with KYTC's engineers and also Beth Stuber? Is that your testimony today?
I stand with what I say. I think, I think there's, they talk about right-of-way issues, the fact that they could, they, the way I understand it is, they don't disagree with the fact that it's not being reconstructed like it should be. They're just saying you should have exceptions, and they refer to right-of-way issues. The right-of-way issue is not the issue, is not the school side, the west side is the east side. That's where they need to have more right-of-way. The solution to this is obtain more right-of-way on the west side of the intersection.
Okay, you mentioned that right-of-way. Are you talking about the property that is owned by Robert Delaney?
I don't know who owns it.
You haven't looked into that?
I'm, I'm, no, I have not.
Okay, very good. Let me jump back to your report. There basically were four recommendations that you made in both of your original report and also the supplemental report. One was that the, you criticized the angle of orientation, correct?
Right, which I don't think anybody disagreed with.
You, you, you also criticized the width of the lanes, both the major lane, the, the both lanes, and then the middle left-turn lane, correct?
Right, because it does not, it does not extend, existing, as you go through the previous, as you go east to the roadway, to this intersection, you have a cross-section, and you're changing the cross-section. You should continue the cross-section all through the intersection.
Yeah, you, it was your testimony that the, the lanes violate the guidelines because they're not wide enough, correct?
No, they, there's certainly lanes like that, there are any, that, that width. What I'm saying is, you have an existing roadway with this existing cross-section, you should continue that cross-section only through this intersection. That's what I said. I didn't, I didn't say they violated standards. I said that you should, since you already have the existing, what was required to, as you went through the previous intersections of 12, of the 12-foot lanes and the 14-foot two-way left-turn lane, that should continue on through this intersection. Why change it there?
I'm going to get into all these things. So I just want to get the four things that you had recommended change. The third one was that you thought the grade needs to be alleviated, correct?
That's right. There's a line of sight issue.
And you also indicated that they need to have a left-turn lane on Schuler. Those are basically the four issues, correct?
That's right.
Okay, very good. And so what I'm going to show you, this is the page from the Design Manual. This is section 902, and I'll point you to the bottom part. I believe your suggestion was that it should be 90 degrees and a minimum of 75 degrees. That was your testimony, correct?
That's right.
And as you can see at the bottom of this Design Manual, it actually says, although a 90-degree intersection is desired, it's not required, but desired, some deviation from this is permissible generally. So again, not all the time, intersection angles between 75 and 90 are preferred. You see that?
I see it.
That doesn't say required. It says preferred, correct?
Yes.
And it even says the intersection angles should be no less than 90 degrees, correct?
60, is what I think.
60, yeah, thank you very much. 60, I can't read. Thank you very much. So you would agree, 75 is not a, a requirement. Is that correct? It's, it's a preference, correct?
Yes, based on safety.
And I also wanted to point you to the top part of this section. This has to do with grade. I think you pointed out that the grade is 2 degrees. Is that correct? And your opinion that 2 degrees was too much, correct?
I don't, I don't remember exactly the number of degrees, but my, my issue was, not the degrees, the issue was the fact that you have a, basically a hill crest at the intersection, whatever degrees you want to have. I measured. You can read what I measured.
Well, do you want, this is your report, would you like to find the degrees in your report?
It wasn't the degrees so much, it was the fact that you have a limited-
Do you mention the degrees in your report, Mr. Agent?
Yes, it is up here about 2% on the eastbound approach to the intersection, the hill crest located at the east side of the intersection.
2%, correct? That's what you cite in your report?
Right.
And you can see from the actual design guidelines, it says major grade changes should be avoided at the intersections, and adequate site changes should be provided along both the intersecting roads. Ideally, grades exceeding 3% in the vicinity of intersections should be avoided, correct?
Right.
So that's greater than 2%, correct?
3 is more than 2, yes.
And since we're getting low on time, what I wanted to also point to you, this is the Common Geometric Practices of Urban Roadway Design. Do you see that?
Yes.
You see the middle column, Urban Collector Streets?
I do.
And you see the middle lanes are a minimum of 10 feet. Is that correct?
Yes.
Not 12?
Yeah.
And we, and we are providing 10 feet, are we not?
And I, and I said, well, I didn't say it violated a standard. I'm saying you've got a cross-section that goes up to this intersection of a certain amount. Why, the changes then, why don't you just extend it on through?
And section two refers to turning lanes, correct? That says a minimum of 10 feet, but 12 is desired, correct? Not 14, like you had submitted in your report, correct?
Right, it's not required.
And you also indicated that the site distance is 400 feet, but the requirement is 360 feet, which we comply with, correct?
It's very, I said it, barely met it, but it did.
Very good. So it does meet it. Let me ask you a question. You have raised the issue that we should make some other improvements, but we can't because we're not buying sufficient right-of-way. Is that right?
I'm saying what everybody says, limited factor here is the right-of-way.
That's right. Are you aware that ALPEP had an agreement from St. Mary's, the church on the corner of Schuler and 1694, to obtain about 4,800 square feet of right-of-way to make some of these changes?
I've seen some issue, talking about that, but like I said before, that's not the pro, that's, that, on the west side-
My question is, are you aware that we did that?
Yes.
And are you aware that Norton Commons vetoed that ability for us to get that right-of-way?
I don't know all the details of that.
And you mentioned that the right-of-way on the other side owned by Robert Delaney, correct?
Which is the critical right-of-way, not the school.
Are you aware that he is the son of Mary Norton Shands, Norton being the same name in Norton Commons?
I have no idea who he is.
Are you aware that his mother is the one that sold the property Norton Commons?
I have no idea about any of that.
Are you aware that the Norton Trust has a equity interest, a financial stake in Norton Commons?
I'm just engineer. I don't know anything about that. I just talk about the numbers.
Let me ask you this. If safety is really the concern, do you think there's any valid reason for Norton Commons to object to us having right-of-way? Or do you think they should provide it to us?
I think whoever has control of the right-of-way on the west side of the intersection, that is the right-of-way that you need to be able to bring this intersection into the design that would be safer.
Thank you very much, Mr. Agent. Yes, that is, thank you. Mr. Chairman, can I ask for a pause so I can change my papers without going into my time here?
Okay, sure.
I'll go back and forth.
Sure. Mr. Talbot, we, I was reminded, we, we'll need to make sure that you submit all of your, what you presented this morning for the record.
Thank you. Mr. Solomon, I don't know if you can confirm, I think the Beth Stuber letter is in the file already? And also, was the KYTC, is that already in the file as well?
Solomon, I better get you to come up and put it on the record, please.
We have the most recent letter from Beth on, on our server, and I, I just got the email from KYTC this morning, so we can get that on file.
So anything that you presented a while ago, a question to Mr. Agent, I mean, if there's anything that, that's new, we, you know, we'll need that for the record. Okay.
I did. I'm happy to do that. I assume, Mr. Agent, let me ask you one last question. Are those all accurate standards from the Highway Design Manual?
Mr. Agent, we need to get you on the mic, please.
Yes, they are. Okay. I think, can we just take traditional notice of the records, because they're just regulations? Thank you very much.
Let's, let's start the-
Very good. Ms. Zimmerman, thank you very much. We've got a very limited time, so we're going to try to truncate this a little bit. Can you please state your name and expertise for the record?
Diane Zimmerman, 12803 High Meadows Pike, Prospect, Kentucky, 40059. I'm a licensed professional engineer in the state of Kentucky, and I am, I've prepared over 650 traffic impact studies in 49 jurisdictions. 86 of those have been in Oldham County. I was under contract with Oldham County Fiscal Court to provide traffic engineering services to the Planning Commission between 2004 and 2015, and I hold a similar contract with Nelson and Shelby County Planning Commissions.
Diane, thank you very much. At the May hearing, you had submitted a traffic study report. Is that correct?
That is correct.
And on a cross-examination from Norton Commons Counsel, there was an error that came up. Is that correct?
That is also correct.
And I believe- Uh, and I believe, can you describe briefly what that error was?
I, uh, used, uh, data from a November two thousand and nineteen study that, um, essentially limited, uh, Norton Commons to fifty percent of their build-out, uh, for the year twenty-twenty-four instead of the, uh, design year in that study, which was twenty-twenty-seven.
And I think that occurred, you basically just dropped the wrong information from the wrong file into your new report, correct?
That is correct.
The November versus the December two thousand and nineteen report, correct?
That's correct.
Was that on purpose or was that accidental?
It was an accident.
Okay, and we had provided a copy of that report to Norton Commons well before the hearing. Did they ever contact you about that error before the hearing in May?
No, they did not.
Okay, and since then, have they provided you the traffic numbers that they wanted you to plug into that report?
Yes, they did.
And in fact, that was not the numbers even from the December nineteen report, is that correct?
That is correct.
So you had to actually contact them and say, no, those numbers are also wrong, we need to make some adjustments for various reasons, is that correct?
That is correct.
And that was to cover the build-out from December of two thousand and nineteen until the mid of two thousand and twenty-two, correct?
That is correct.
Okay, and those have been updated, correct?
Yes.
And those numbers were submitted to KYTC in Jefferson County?
Yes.
And both of those jurisdictions have approved the traffic designed to your knowledge on, based on that, the new traffic study with the updated figures provided by Norton Commons, correct?
That is correct.
Okay, so I want to talk about some of the, the parts of your report, and in interest of time, I'm gonna show, this is table four. Can you briefly tell the, the Planning Commission what this table is?
Yes, table four is a comparison of the December twelfth, two thousand and nineteen study, which is phase one of Sanctuary Falls, comparing, uh, to, uh, what will it be expected with phase two of Sanctuary Falls and the development that has occurred in Norton Commons between twenty nineteen and twenty twenty-one. And twenty twenty-one is the date of the counts, just so we're clear.
So these two columns are from your two thousand and nineteen, correct?
That's correct.
And then these two columns are from the new numbers with the updated Norton Commons numbers, correct?
That is correct.
And that also assumes the traffic lights are, are installed, which we, Elite has put up the bond for, is that correct?
That is also correct.
And so looking at Schuler Lane, the level of service from the two thousand and twenty-nine build-out of phase one compared to the two thousand and twenty-nine build-out of phase two remains at level of service B, is that correct?
That is correct.
And if you look down the northbound, both AM and PM, for Schuler, the level of service remains at level of service A, is that correct?
That is also correct.
Now, looking at Saint Bernadette Avenue, does, do those, does the level of service change from the, uh, phase one to phase two full build-out in two thousand and twenty-nine?
Uh, there is a modest improvement on Saint Bernadette Avenue.
Improvement both in the AM and the PM?
AM and PM.
Okay, and then the northbound is, stays the same within A level, is that correct?
That's correct.
Uh, what about the Worthington Lane YMCA? Is there any change at that intersection?
There is no significant change at that intersection.
What about the YMCA eastbound?
Uh, they're, they're all, remains the same level of service, all approaches.
Worthington Lane westbound, those also remain the same, is that correct?
Yes.
Northbound remains the same?
Southbound the same.
Southbound the same. And Stone School Road, the East Boulevard, the eastbound, is there any change there?
There is no change in the level of service.
Stone School Road, is there any change there?
No change.
Northbound and southbound, is there any change?
No change.
Okay, so on the basis of your new numbers that have been examined by both jurisdictions, and based on your traffic numbers provided by Norton Commons, there are either improvements or no change to the, to the phase one development to phase two on the basis of having the, the improvements that we have discussed in your report, correct?
That is correct.
Thank you very much. I have all my questions.
All righty, Mr. Cabot, I think your time has expired here.
Took it to the wire, didn't it?
You did. All right, thank you. And then with that, uh, the testimony and those, those opposing the application-
I didn't think you was going anywhere.
Uh, we'll move down to testimony and those opposing the traffic information only. And, um, Mr. Baxter, you also have twenty minutes, sir.
For the record, I represent Norton Commons. My name is Barry Baxter, one-one-seven West Main Street in La Grange, uh, and I need to ask some questions of Ms. Zimmerman.
Zimmerman, first of all, you said you had prepared over six hundred and fifty traffic impact studies, correct?
Yes.
And, uh, of those six hundred and fifty, how many have you prepared for this project?
Longest amount, we're having a little trouble with the clock here. Anybody has access to a better clock, we're, we'd like to get it.
I know. Yes.
Others' town.
Hey, Ryan, can, can you get this up so I can open my phone?
We'll, we can time it all with our phone here, so. Okay, all right, I've started it at twenty minutes, so proceed, Mr. Baxter.
Uh, Ms. Zimmerman, I, I asked you, you said you had prepared over six hundred and fifty, uh, traffic impact studies, correct?
Correct.
And how many have you prepared for this particular project?
I think there's eight versions.
Eight different versions of it. Okay, so, uh, the original ver, the, well, let's talk about the December, uh, twelfth, two thousand and nineteen study that says on the front, prepared for Elite Homes in Norton Commons.
That's correct.
And the numbers that were included in that study that you got from Norton Commons, uh, were the correct numbers, right?
Yes.
And the only modification that you made to the numbers after we had the hearing in May was you contacted David Thompson to find out how many of those entitlements had been constructed, uh, so that it would change how many were left to be constructed, right?
Correct.
So overall, the numbers from the two thousand and nineteen study that you had are the same numbers, uh, that you would have applied in this most recent traffic study dated, uh, in July of two thousand and twenty-two, right?
I'm not following your question.
Well, the total number of, of-
The entitlements are the same.
The entitlements are the same, so it's just how many have been built, right?
That's correct.
So it really didn't change, wouldn't have changed your numbers.
It's, no, we're timing it on our phone. The clock's not working.
So, in the study that you prepared, that we talked about having issues in, uh, in May of, uh, two thousand and twenty-two, you made a determination as to how much of the traffic from Norton Commons was going to flow, uh, north towards Schuler Lane. Do you recall making that determination?
Yes.
And do you remember what the percentage was that you thought would be flowing north towards Schuler Lane, uh, at that time?
Five percent.
Okay, so I'm gonna show you, this is the study, right?
Yes.
April fifth, two thousand and twenty-two, and there's the paragraph, right? And it says, of the external trips, ten percent will go north towards Schuler Lane, and ten percent will go south towards KY twenty-two.
And that is the incorrect page-
Okay.
-in that document.
So now, but, but at some point, you decided that it was ten percent, right? And now you've changed your opinion to be five percent, correct?
The December report says five percent.
I thought you had just copied and pasted this page out of the December report.
That pa, that, the version in the April study came from the November twenty-fifth study and not the December twelfth.
Okay, and so you did your traffic counts that you're relying upon today, uh, about a year ago, right?
Correct.
And are you aware of any conditions, uh, in the area of Schuler Lane that may have changed in the last twelve months that would have any impact on, uh, the analysis that you performed?
No.
Uh, if, uh, you were to learn, for example, that the school traffic for the Catholic school has now been rerouted in part to, uh, use the driveway that accesses on Schuler Lane for pick-off, pickup and drop-off in the morning, uh, would that impact, uh, your study in any way?
It could change the answers. That was occurring when the counts were made in August of twenty-one.
Okay, so, uh, so that was occurring?
Yes.
All right, so it, was it occurring that cars were backing up and sitting on sixteen ninety-four, waiting to turn in Schuler Lane then?
Yes.
Uh, and so your testimony is, is that in the counts that you did, that show, uh, the limited traffic on Schuler Lane, that includes those numbers, right?
That is my, yes.
So in the report that you prepared, and the most recent one that you prepared, turn me, show me the page where it includes those, uh, those vehicles being, uh-
Well, we're gonna start with figure two. So you'll see there are sixty-four left-turning vehicles in and sixty-five right-turning vehicles exiting.
How, how long has the school been there?
I believe this school opened in, uh, two thousand and five, six, seven?
Uh, so, do, do you have any idea if the school was, was using this traffic pattern in two thousand and nineteen when you did the counts?
They were not using that traffic pattern in two thousand and nineteen.
Okay, so you believe that under figure two, that the sixty-four cars that are turning in, at least a portion of those, are cars that are going into Saint Mary's?
That is correct.
Now, I have a difficult time understanding how that could be possibly correct, if sixty-four cars are turning in and, and of it, you've got another eight, I guess, that are coming the other direction, right?
Yep.
And so you're saying that all of these, the sixty-five that are coming out, are those from Saint Mary's?
Yes.
Okay, all right.
And I would say that I base that, um, on the fact that the two thousand and nineteen count was fourteen in and ten out. So there's been an increase of over fifty vehicles in and out of that driveway.
Can you explain, you, Mr. Cabot showed you a figure, and it says that the intersection at Saint, Saint Bernadette is going to, is gonna improve in some way, that's on page ten of your report?
Yes.
And explain to me how it is that with all of this new traffic, Saint Bernadette is gonna get better?
Because of the connection that's gonna be provided between Norton Commons and Sanctuary Falls, section two, which did not exist in section one, there would be no connection between Sanctuary Falls and Norton Commons in section one. So the three percent of both developments that are attracted to Norton Commons will utilize the connection between Norton Commons and Sanctuary Falls. And so that decrease in that left turn volume from Saint Bernadette's and the decrease in the right turn volume off of sixteen ninety-four allowed that intersection to operate with a better level of service in two thousand and twenty-nine.
So your assumption is that, that that will be built by two thousand and twenty-nine?
Correct.
Okay, uh, thank you, Ms. Zimmerman. I don't have any other questions. Mr. Sen, could I get you up here, please?
Mr. Baxter, just for your information, you have thirteen minutes and twenty-one seconds.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Can you, uh, state your name, please, for the record and tell me where you're employed?
I'm Erickson, Land Design Development, and a engineer at Land Design for twenty-two years. I'm currently the principal in charge of Land Design.
And, Mr. Sen, I-
You have fixed experience, too. I've designed over a hundred miles of roadways and a hundred mile, a hundred intersections with several subdivisions with Oldham County as far as Brentwood, Poplar Woods, uh, Fox Run, those Claymont Springs, and we can go on and on.
Mr. Chairman, can you pause my time? I can't get to my PowerPoint.
Keep flipping.
Time is paused.
So, so, Mr. Sen, uh, I assume that this is part of the plan for Sanctuary Falls, section two, correct?
Uh, this is phase two.
Phase two, I apologize. And, and you're ta, you are talking about the roadway design as it relates in part to this roadway on Schuler Lane, right?
Um, I thought we were referring to the intersection of the Schuler Lane.
Did you only design, did you only design the, the intersection?
No, we designed the, the expansion of Schuler Lane.
Okay, so you, so all of this is also part of your design, right?
That is correct.
All right, so, uh, in this particular location, you show on the plan's a stub, right?
That is correct.
And right now, it is a stub to nowhere.
Uh, per the plumery plan from Norton Commons that we got from Amy Yomie, there is a stub at that location.
Okay, but there's nothing, there's no, this hasn't been approved, this hasn't, uh, they haven't started to build this, right?
Uh, they haven't started to build, but we haven't started to build phase two.
Okay, and so, have you seen this drawing?
I have.
And so this is a drawing, uh, and, and I have the surveyor here to testify about what this is in particular, but this is the corner at Schuler Lane, right?
Okay.
And, uh, are, have you done any survey work out along Schuler Lane for the Delaney property?
Uh, we have tied down the boundary when we did the surveying for Sanctuary Falls.
All right, do you agree that this is, uh, Mr. Delaney's corner for this property located, uh, to the north or the west, or I guess, I don't even know if that's the east of this, uh, this intersection?
Hold on, I hate to ask you to come up, but we need to hear it on the, uh, the record. And I will pause your time, sir.
I believe that line is the right-of-way line, Barry, not the property line.
I'm asking a witness a question, so, you know, I appreciate your interpretation of it. Uh, so, you, you've seen this, it, 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 you, is this the, the boundary of Mr. Delaney's property?
I'm not the surveyor, so I'm not sure about that.
All right, you said you all did survey work out there.
That is correct.
All right, do you agree that if this is the right-of-way and his property goes to the middle of the roadway, if that's the right-of-way, do you agree that's his corner?
Fifteen feet off the, on the road in the existing pavement.
Yeah, where this white spot is.
Within the existing pavement.
Yep, in the existing pavement.
Yes.
And, and that was part of the design that you did for KYTC and for Jefferson County of redesigning the intersection, right?
Yes.
And how are you gonna address the fact that the pavement, uh, currently, uh, encroaches on Mr. Delaney's property?
That's an existing pavement, and we are not proposing anything outside of that existing pavement.
We're hit on.
You, you exchanged some design emails with the folks at KYTC, did you not?
Yes.
And Mr. Bailey, who works with KYTC, sent you this, uh, this drawing telling you that this is how he wanted the intersection to look, correct?
Um, I don't think I was on that email, but maybe.
All right, have you seen this email?
I'm not sure, it was, um, copied on there, I can't tell.
Okay, well, if, uh, if you were on the email- That's an email back, that you sent back to them after you, after you reviewed this drawing, right?
I think this was before, this is when we were under the pressure we can get right-of-way from the adjacent properties, I believe, that's what that's showing.
But you acknowledge that Mr. Bailey said this is how he wanted the intersection to look, right?
Let's see where it's, I'm seeing proposed right-of-way. That's where we thought we were getting additional right-of-way, so we could have done that.
But again, this is how he said he wanted the intersection to look, right?
If we could have gotten the proposed right-of-way.
And you said that you would do that, right?
If we got the proposed right-of-way.
And you can't, you, you can't do that, you didn't do that, right?
Because we didn't get the proposed right-of-way.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Sin. We go back here.
Mr. Baxter, you're eight minutes and nine seconds, sir.
Agent, you're on deck, so.
Have you been sworn in?
Nope.
Okay, you get to do sworn in, Mr. Agent.
Do you solemnly swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Name and address for the record, please.
Holland, Derek Holland, six oh eight South Third Street, Louisville, Kentucky.
And, uh, sir, where are you employed?
Saback Wilson Lingo.
And what is your job there?
Director of Surveying, National Land Surveyor.
Is, is this, uh, part of a survey that you, uh, prepared that shows the, uh, the boundary line for the Delaney property out at sixteen ninety-four in Schuler Lane?
Yes.
And on this drawing, the black line, tell the commissioners what this black line depicts.
The black line represents the west line of Robert Delaney's property.
Alright, and that goes out into the roadway?
Yes.
And there is a, there is a.
Begin to the mic a little bit closer.
The, the, the black line represents the west line of the Delaney property.
And, uh, and so the, the right-of-way, the exist, you showed the existing road right-of-way on this drawing, correct?
Uh, there is no deeded right-of-way for that roadway. That right-of-way was taken from a previous survey that was done in nineteen eighty-four and there was found monumentation along that fifteen-foot line.
Okay, and what's the, what's the black dot right here in the, in sixteen ninety-four?
That is, that would be Mr. Delaney's southwest property corner.
Alright, and what is the white dot?
That is a found property corner, it's an iron pipe in the pavement.
In the existing pavement?
Yes.
Okay, thank you, sir. Mr. Agent, if you could, you've already been sworn, you've already introduced yourself. You have something on the report you want to talk about?
Yes, sir, uh, since the original report I was given, this, this report says a little bit, first page is the background, uh, it shows the, the conclusions from the first report and says that the purpose of this report is to note the additional material and to add additional comments. And it's, page two just lists additional material in kind of summary form. And then I go through some bullet points, real quickly to talk about these bullet points. Number one, and I think we just got through seeing the, uh, the email that lists the, uh, the design from the cabinet, and they acknowledge the same thing I've said all along, is that you should use the existing right-of-way on the west side of the intersection to have a more of a right-angled intersection. I don't think that's any debate of anybody. Because the number two bullet point is, the lack of acquired right-of-way is the reason that the intersection redesign does not meet the design regulations. And we're not talking about the right-of-way with the school, we're talking about the right-of-way on the, what I'll call the east side of the intersection. The next one, bullet point talks about the fact that in, what, where they're trying to squeeze this intersection into the restricted right-of-way, and when they've done that, they've created a situation where they put a retaining wall adjacent to the school property. And when they put that retaining wall, then they, then they, then they put a guardrail. So, I won't bore you with all the research I've done with guardrail, but guardrail is a last resort. Guardrail is a hazard, especially the end of a guardrail. I haven't seen how they're going to end it, but all I'm saying here is the, the objective of redesign is to improve safety and not to create new hazards. By trying to fit this, this intersection that is restricted right-of-way, they've done such, they've created a situation where they put this little section of guardrail in a curve leading up to the intersection, and that guardrail itself is a hazard. Uh, there's some issues, I'll mention that in the case material, talks about drainage issues and talks about, uh, that this is created by lack of right-of-way, uh, as far as getting water off the road. Uh, also, the cabinets, some of their emails talk about the same problem that I mentioned before, is that vehicles that are turning right, if they're going, uh, west and they're making this right turn into this skewed intersection, you have to make a wide right turn, and that could be a problem for trucks and also for school buses. So that's an issue that we get into there. Also, the fact that the shoulder width is not, we talked about before, the fact that leading up to this, we had a four-foot paved shoulder, and now all of a sudden, we have a very narrow shoulder. That, that's a problem with shoulder drop-offs, and it can, it can, is a safety issue. I've had numerous accidents over the years where I've been defending the state where we've had issues about shoulder drop-off. And the final thing that I say here, that kind of summarizes everything, I've, my whole opinion, is that, uh, you know, the, the, the intersection that they're right now, that existing intersection does not meet design regulations. There's all, there's hundreds of intersections like that across the state that don't meet design regulations because they were built a hundred years ago with, to no design, it just kind of happened. Which is probably, if you go back, this is what this one did too. But when you reconstruct the road, reconstruct the intersection in this case, this is what I teach in my risk management class all the time, uh, is that when you redesign the road, your duty is then to bring that new road or that new intersection up to existing regulations. And that's what my whole purpose here is. I looked at this intersection with the objective of saying, are we, are we going and making this intersection as safe as we can, or are we creating situation, a, a problem here? You know, we're actually creating a problem with the guardrail that we're putting in there that wasn't there before. But we have an opportunity to correct our problem. The existing intersection is a problem because of the skewed intersection, the line of sight we're going to talk about. When you're coming out there, you've got to look back to your left, which is a problem with line of sight. When you're turning right, you have to make a wide right turn, which is another problem. So we have a problem, we have a situation where we can correct it, just obtain the right-of-way to allow us to correct it. And that's what I talk about in this supplemental report.
Am I doing on time, Mr. Chairman?
Uh, you've got two minutes left.
Two minutes is all I'm going to need, can I get back up on here? Uh, you need, did you get sworn?
I have not.
Raise your right hand, be sworn, please.
Do you solemnly swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Name and address, please.
Ashley Porter, um, ninety-four eighteen Norton Commons Boulevard, Prospect.
And sir, I'm, I've got some pictures up here that I'm showing, are these pictures that you took?
Yes.
And can you tell me the date and the time that you took these pictures?
Last Thursday, August eighteenth, about seven forty, seven forty-five AM.
Alright, and what is this showing, what, what are we looking at here?
Uh, as I was approaching, uh, work that morning, I noticed a lot of congestion on sixteen ninety-four and, uh, started to move forward, and, uh, this is pictures just of me going through that intersection.
Okay, so this, this is, you're, you're sitting on sixteen ninety-four in this picture?
Yes.
And to, to our left, you can see some cars, and is that on Schuler Lane?
Yes.
And, uh, this shows the congestion, i- is this related to the Catholic school?
Yes.
Alright, so did, did you take all these pictures?
Yes.
Uh, and this is a picture of another vehicle sitting out there in the right-of-way?
Correct.
Alright, uh, and you turned, it looks like, is this turning on to Schuler?
Yes, it's used, utilizing the back entrance.
Alright, and, and as you sat there, did you see the cars that are going in? Did they come back out this driveway, or how did they get out?
I paused your time or whatever, but let me, let me ask, uh, our councilor, whatever. Is this, um, would this information be relevant? I mean, there, there could have been an accident up there, you know, I mean, do we know? Would this be relevant for us to, to be presented, uh, as facts?
Yes.
Okay, who's seat on, you've got forty-four seconds left.
So how, how do the cars get, get out if they're queuing into the school here?
There's a circular drive at the school, and they just circle in, drop kids off, and come straight out.
And, and do they come back out on Schuler Lane?
Yes.
And, uh, this is just a picture going back out Schuler?
Correct.
Uh, and when was this picture taken?
That was the same afternoon, um, I think about two thirty, two forty-five.
Uh, and this is just showing a truck that is getting ready to turn on Schuler?
Yes.
Uh, Schuler, sixteen ninety-four?
Getting ready to turn right on Schuler.
And, and you were just showing the condition of, of how wide they needed to get to be able to make that turn?
Yes.
Okay, uh, Mr. Chairman, that's all I have, thank you.
Thank you, you had two seconds left.
Better than Mr. Talbot.
Alright. Okay, now we'll move into, uh, the rebuttal evidence and cross-examination by the applicant, Mr. Talbot. Now, I won't start the time, we'll try the timer up here, that's ten minutes, yes.
Mr. Porter, can I ask you a couple of questions real fast?
If I can keep my time not started while he's walking up. Mr. Porter, this truck you pointed out, uh, I, I saw this picture, I mean, this is not just an eighteen-wheeler, it looks like a thirty-two-wheeler or something to me, right?
I have no idea.
This is not a common truck for Schuler Lane, would you agree?
Uh, you see it quite often, I mean, larger construction vehicles and school buses.
Right, that's, would you agree that's bigger than a school bus?
Appears to be.
Yeah, and, uh, thank you very much, those are all the questions I have. Uh, the fellow from Saback and Wilson can ask you a couple of questions?
Strong.
No, I don't need a strong.
Okay.
I didn't catch your name.
Derek Holland.
Hey Derek, how are you? Uh, I thank you for your testimony, we're, we're, there was a meeting with Norton Commons at KYTC last Friday. Were you at that meeting?
No.
You were not at that meeting, are, have you had any discussions with what occurred at that meeting?
Nope.
Were you aware that they discussed at KYTC, the, the information about the, uh, Robert Delaney right-of-way issue?
No.
Okay, very good. You design any, do you do any road building?
No, answer right.
Alright, thank you very much, it's all my questions.
Thank you.
Uh, Diane, I've got a couple of questions for you. Diane, you were asking questions about new developments and changes, uh, recent changes to the roadway, is that correct?
Yes.
Under the regulations, uh, do you know what the requirement is in terms of doing your traffic counts, uh, for the planning commission?
They are nine month, the traffic counts have to be within nine months of the filing date of the original report.
So you would agree that, uh, there, there is a time period that the council understands that changes can happen in that nine-month period of time, correct?
Correct.
And that does not invalidate your findings or numbers at all, is that correct?
That is correct.
Thank you very much, those are all my questions. Oh, and is the tra, is that regulation seven point two E four?
I believe that's correct.
It's in the Odom County regulations, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Eric, can I call you? And Chrissy, could I, if you put up my PowerPoint?
Mr. Talbot, we've got, you've got seven minutes and forty-three seconds, we're off a little bit on the clock, on the walls, so. I've paused your time till they get that set up.
Mr. Sin, uh, this is, um, this shows the overall area of Norton Commons, uh, Glen Oaks and the surrounding area including our site, is that correct?
Yes.
And you see the little red circle up in the top?
I do.
That's the area of the intersection of Schuler and sixteen ninety-four, correct?
Yes.
I don't want to zoom in on that, we're starting to zoom in, same circle, correct?
Yep.
Same circle there, correct?
Yes.
And same circle there, correct?
Yes.
So initially, that red circle, that was the right-of-way from Saint Mary's that they had agreed to provide us, that Norton Commons vetoed, is that correct?
Yes, that's the area.
Okay, and that was the part that you were talking about in terms of the prior emails from KYTC, correct?
That and along, uh, sixteen ninety-four.
And so they had made recommendations, but that assumed you were able to get right-of-way that Norton Commons subsequently vetoed, correct?
That is correct.
Uh, would you agree if Norton Commons had any interest in safety, there would be no reason to veto that, uh, right-of-way granted from Saint Mary's?
Yeah, so if we were able to get that right-of-way, we would definitely improve that intersection even more than what we currently are.
Thank you very much, and this is the current roadway, Schuler and sixteen ninety-four, correct?
Yes.
And this shows the, it's a little bit fuzzy, but this shows the current lane configuration, correct?
That is correct.
Hopefully, the planning commissioners can see it, there's some indications on the radius. But can you tell the commissioners what the current radius is for cars at that intersection?
That first car at the stop bar, that would be around approximately a fifty-seven degree angle, so they would have to look over their shoulder slightly to look westbound, or I guess, looking north on sixteen ninety-four.
And what about the second car, did you do a, a design or a number for that too?
Yeah, we had assumed that the second car would be sitting behind that first, and that one is current, would be currently at a fifty-degree angle.
Okay, so the, the area of orientation for Schuler Lane at sixteen ninety-four currently is fifty-seven degrees for the first car, fifty degrees for the second car, correct?
Yes.
Alright, now, since the, the, this was the design with the right-of-way, the intersection with the right-of-way being granted from Saint Mary's, is that correct?
That is correct.
And was that ultimately approved by KYTC?
It was.
And they did, they ultimately asked you to make some changes, is that correct?
Um, we were required to make changes because we were no longer able to get that right-of-way on Saint Mary's.
That's correct, and can you describe for the planning commission what those changes were?
Uh, we had to stay within the existing right-of-way, which required us to pull that intersection in towards the existing right-of-way. One of the requirements that, how we department requested us, that we eliminate that left turn lane to be able to add a wider maneuvering area for a larger vehicle coming from sixteen ninety-four, turning on to Schuler Lane.
And isn't it true that KYTC, they really didn't even want the left turn lane on Schuler Lane?
Correct, they said it wasn't justified per Ms. Zimmerman's traffic analysis.
And originally from phase one, that was, we agreed to do the left turn lane simply because we didn't think there's any issue with it, and two, the, some of the residents in the back had requested it, correct?
Correct, and we thought that we were able to get the appropriate right-of-way.
And you also are doing a left turn lane on sixteen ninety-four onto Schuler Lane, correct?
Yes, we are.
And you would agree that will assist with traffic, correct?
Yes, that's part of phase two, and that will definitely assist with the traffic that pictures you just saw.
And the improved turning radius that you mentioned for school buses, that's for the ones coming from the north, heading south, and taking a right turn on to Schuler Lane?
That is correct.
Okay, very good. And this is the current configuration of the roadway as we designed it, is that correct?
That is correct.
And has that been approved by, by KYTC?
It's been approved by KYTC, Odom County, and Jefferson County.
And you were just given the approval from KYTC yesterday, is that correct?
Uh, they updated their approval and said that they still agree with our original permit.
And it's your understanding that that was following the meeting with Norton Commons that they had with KYTC on Friday, where they raised the issue about Mr. Delaney's right-of-way, is that correct?
That is, that is correct.
Okay, Chrissy, I'd like to go back to this screen real quick. Chrissy or Christie?
Christie.
Thank you very much, sorry about that.
You have three fifty-one.
Very good. Alright, yeah. You heard the issue about the right-of-way of Mr. Delaney's property line supposedly, supposedly going into the, the road, is that correct?
Yes.
Are you aware of this regula, of this statute?
I am.
And doesn't this statute say that in the absence of any record, which they already indicated, their expert or their gentleman from Saback and Wilson indicated there was not, the width of a public road right-of-way shall be presumed to extend to and include the area line outside the shoulders and ditch lines and within any landmarks such as fences, fence posts, cornerstones, or other similar monuments indicating the boundary lines, correct?
Yes, number two states that.
And you would agree that monuments and, and some of the landmarks would include the pavement, would you not?
I do, and Metro and how we department agreed with that.
They did, and that's on, they were, are you on, do you understand that they were aware of this statute when they gave us the approval yesterday?
I'm not sure.
Okay. Those are all my questions for you, thank you very much. Joe, I'd like to ask you a couple of questions.
Two minutes and forty seconds.
Forty seconds?
Two minutes and forty seconds.
Uh, can you please state your name for the record?
Joe Pusatieri, and you're representative of Elite Homes, is that correct? I am.
Uh, Mr. Pusatieri, are you familiar with who Robert Delaney is? The person that has been mentioned by Norton Count, Commons Council about right-of-way issues?
I am.
Uh, can you tell the planning commission who he is?
Mr. Delaney is the son of Mary Norton Shands. Uh, the Norton Trust is an equity partner in Norton Commons, and Mr. Delaney is vice president of the trust.
And did you have a discussion with Mr. Osborne with Norton Commons about that subject?
I, I had tried to, uh, when we first bought the property, I called Norton Commons, met with them, said, we would like to try to maybe help you guys out, and, because we both needed a sewage treatment plant. And I said that we would be willing to build our sewage treatment plant bigger so that they could access it, we'll move it to a spot that works for them, and in return, I asked if they would be willing to help us acquire some right-of-way from, or not object to what we were doing with Saint Mary's and help us with Delaney. He did not indicate a problem with that until we wrote it into an agreement, and he struck them all out and said, no, I'm not willing to agree to those things.
And you did have an agreement with Saint Mary's to provide some of the right-of-way on the west side of Schuler Lane?
We did, we had an agreement with Saint Mary's, and they're aware of the retaining wall and the rails and everything, and they're, they're okay with everything we're doing.
And with Saint Mary's, they had agreed to give it to you, but it was ultimately vetoed by Norton Commons, right?
It, Saint Mary's continues to be a part of the HOA at Norton Commons, and they had to get the HOA's approval, and so Norton Commons refused to give it, and actually threatened Saint Mary's if they worked with Elite.
And you, um, did you offer Saint Mary's anything in exchange for that right-of-way?
We were going to, we are giving if we are approved, we were going to give Saint Mary's two acres for a ball practice field in return for a little bit over a tenth of an acre of land. We will still honor our great, we'll still give them the land whether we ever, since we, even though we're not getting the right-of-way.
Even though they were vetoed to give you the right-of-way, you decided to still give Saint Mary's the land for the ball field, correct?
That's correct.
Okay, those are all my questions, thank you.
Robert, twenty seconds. Thank you, sir. With that, uh, Mr. Baxter, you have ten minutes. And let's, uh, we'll try to get the clock reset here, and then, uh, hopefully it will work. I am, alright, let's, uh, go ahead and start, I've got it on the, the phone here.
Mr. Chairman, uh, sir, can you state your name, please, for the record?
Richard Mark Rubenstein.
And Mr. Rubenstein, are you a licensed attorney?
I am.
Um, you handed me a note, and you took some issue with some of the things that were in the applicant's presentation and rebuttal, and I wanted you to have an opportunity to express what your concerns are, so I'm going to let you make, make your point.
Certainly, thank you very much, thank you for giving me this opportunity, uh, due respect to.
Please get your name and address for the record, please.
Richard Mark Rubenstein.
And just address?
Eleven seven hundred Hidden Creek Road, Prospect.
Go ahead, sir.
I'd just like to clear the record, I represent a Hidden Creek resident, she is my wife. Um, we live in Hidden, Hidden Creek subdivision, we filed comments on April nineteenth, uh, twenty twenty-two on the intersection problems in connection with this development. At that time, uh, we had been apprised, um, that a left-hand turn signal on Schuler Lane, um, as originally, um, considered, was being removed, and at that time, we raised questions as to the safety, the efficiency, and the overburdening, uh, essentially, that, that might ensue as a result of a lack of improvements to the intersection. Since that time, we have seen the development of. Since that time, we have seen the development of record here by Norton Commons, and we stand and adopt that position. That's all I wanted to say, just to clear the record.
Thank you.
Agent, can I ask you, come up here real quick? Uh, Mr. Agent, you were asked by Mr. Talbot, and, and he asked some other witnesses about whether or not the intersection would be made safer had Saint Mary's been allowed to make the right-of-way donation, uh, to this project.
Yes.
Uh, but, and, and, and then the, the issue was then raised, well, you know, if Norton Commons was interested in safety, they would have allowed the donation to be made, you heard that, right?
I did.
So if, let, let's just say, that what's the safest thing, uh, if we can't get the right-of-way, if we just don't build the subdivision, that's probably the safest thing, right?
Need to get closer to the microphone, Mr. Agent.
I do, but you don't have the extra volume that you're, that you're gonna create with the subdivision, was.
So we wouldn't be in, uh, if, if the subdivision not built, we wouldn't be creating a safety issue at the intersection?
Wouldn't be any different than it is right now, there hasn't been a safety issue at the intersection now because of, of the volume, I looked at the crash data, didn't find any, but we're obviously gonna have a lot more volume now, there's a reason why we need to make it, uh, built in a, in a, in the orientation that I was talking about.
Okay, all right, thank you very much, sir, I appreciate it. Uh, Mr. Osborne, can I get you to come up, you need to state your name, have you been sworn?
Oh, thank you, he's been sworn, yeah. Is that your?
Do you solemnly swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Just name and address, please.
Osborne, ninety-four, eighteen Norton Commons Boulevard.
Uh, as a part of the rebuttal, Mr. Pusatieri stood up and said that you all had a meeting and discussed, uh, this intersection, uh, prior to them starting this project.
That is not correct.
All right, so was there any kind of meeting that you recall?
There was a meeting when Clayton Holmes began the project phase one, and the discussion between Clayton and Norton's was, if we would not oppose section one, first phase, that we would strike a deal sharing the waste treatment plant, that was the extent of the deal.
And, and there wasn't discussion about, uh, right-of-way being donated or anything like that at Schuler Lane and sixteen ninety-four?
At that time, there was not.
Thank you, Mr. Osborne, I appreciate it. Holmes, can I get you to come up? Just so we're, we're clear, Mr. Solomon, uh, you're aware that it's a standard practice of, of staff to post the staff report, the subdivision plan, uh, letters of opposition, things like that on, on the planning commission's website, right?
I, I don't handle that function.
What, have you ever been on the website?
Yes.
And have you seen that things like that are posted?
Yes.
All right, so for example, the KYTC email from back in March, uh, I will tell you was posted on, uh, the website.
Okay.
All right, so as of, you said as of this morning, you got an email from KYTC about this intersection?
Correct.
Uh, and that's the first you'd seen that email?
The email that I'd been in discussion with them yesterday.
Yesterday, okay, and, uh, and was any of that information provided to me before, uh, we got here today?
I don't know.
All right, so, but it couldn't have been provided to me any earlier than yesterday, right?
My communication with KYTC was yesterday, they could have had communication with any other party prior to that.
All right, and the letter from Ms. Stuber was dated yesterday?
Correct.
And so none of that was in the file, uh, yesterday morning?
Not that letter.
Okay, and none of the stuff for the, the KYTC email obviously was not in there?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, all right, with that, uh, clock here, all right, now we're down to the, uh, final statement of the opposition, Mr. Baxter, and you have five minutes.
Chairman, so we're going by your phone, not by the twenty-nine seconds on the clock, right?
You have five minutes.
All right, thank you. Uh, ladies and gentlemen, I appreciate you all's time, not only today, uh, but when we were here in May, uh, I want to go back a little bit to that May hearing, because I think it's important for you all to remember the discussions that we had, uh, when we were here at that time. So Mr. Agent stood up, and he gave you all a detailed explanation of his concerns about the safety at the intersection of sixteen ninety-four and Schuler Lane. Here's the problem, and I, I can already tell you that I, I know what I'm, what you are gonna hear when Mr. Talbot stands up in one regard, he's gonna tell you that that intersection is not part of your all's jurisdiction, and that they have an approval letter from KYTC, and they have one from, uh, the, the folks at Louisville Metro. But the issue is, is we're talking about Oldham County residents, and we're talking about a development plan and a rezoning of property in Oldham County, that's why we're here, we're not at Louisville Metro right now, we're, we're in front of you all. And so the concern is that the safety of this intersection impacts people who are gonna live, who live in Oldham County already, the folks that live at the end of Schuler Lane, the folks that are gonna live in phase one of this development that has already been approved, and now the folks that are gonna live in phase two of this development. So you all do have an opportunity here to examine the concerns that were raised by Mr. Agent in the design of this intersection. In addition, there is no question, but Ms. Zimmerman told you all when we were here in May, that it is, that she believes that the design process should work this way. A valid traffic study should be presented to the roadway designers before the roadway is designed, a valid traffic study, and she acknowledged, when we were here in May, that her traffic study was not valid because there was incorrect numbers that she relied upon, and then she talked about assumptions and things that she made in order to reach the conclusions that she admitted at that point were incorrect. So what we have is you all have been submitted a traffic study on July the twenty-seventh of twenty twenty-two. That's what is the design criteria. The roadway was already designed, the roadway was already designed, already approved by KYTC in March of twenty twenty-two, before we came to the last hearing, before that we talked about the problems with the study. So her sworn testimony is that it is important, it is imperative to have a proper roadway to, in order to engage in proper roadway design, to have a valid study, and there wasn't a valid study until July the twenty-seventh of twenty twenty-two. Those things are big concerns, those things are things that you all should consider. In addition, that, you know, Mr. Agent pointed out all of the regulations that are involved in the design criteria, and he has indicated the proper way to design this roadway and the way that this problem could be fixed. And while we hear about Mr. Delaney, we, we don't have one single scrap of paper that indicates that Mr. Delaney said, "No, I won't give you any right-of-way, I won't sell you property, there's no way in the world I'm gonna do that." Mr. Agent said that's the way to fix it, but we don't know that there's any effort been made to fix it that way, and plus, we still have, uh, it, it, the way it's designed now creates a, a danger to the public and is a safety issue that needs to be properly addressed. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, sir. All right, and Mr. Talbot, you'll have, um, also five minutes here, this is final statement, and commissioners, uh, we will have an opportunity here when they complete their final statement to ask questions, so. Let me, uh, hold on just a second here, let me get your time started, all right?
Ready?
Yes, sir.
Uh, ladies and gentlemen of this commission, first of all, it's my privilege to be before you multiple times on this case, and, uh, thank you very much for your all's time, I know how hard it is to have the jobs you all have, you have to make tough decisions, but fortunately, you're widely and well compensated for that work, I know, uh, most places, I think, get about ten dollars a day or something. There is lots of things that Norton Commons and my client have disagreed with in these presentations, there are certain things that are undeniable, it's undeniable that this case has been better vetted, or fully vetted probably than any other subdivision case I have seen, certainly in Oldham County. We have had multiple hearings, we've had multiple neighborhood meetings, we have had multiple times that we've gone to all the jurisdictions and authorities to get the approvals that we need. I heard Mr. Baxter make comments that suggesting there was some impropriety or something unfair about the report from Beth Stuber and KYTC being given to him yesterday and today. First of all, that has been the, that has been the practice of Norton Commons throughout this process with us. Secondly, we have been asking KYTC to provide that authority ever since we submitted those new numbers, we just received that email late yesterday afternoon. Now, why did they send that? Norton Commons had a specific meeting on Friday with KYTC that they, they denied our ability to attend that meeting, we asked, and we were told no. That is not cooperatively working with each other, they had that meeting effectively one business day before, two business days before this hearing, to the last minute throw something at us, denying our project by presenting this issue of supposed issue about property and Mr. Delaney's property going into the roadway, that is a red herring. The state law provides that that road already is right-of-way, he has lost that, you're probably familiar with the concept of adverse possession, it's effectively the same type of thing, it is a presumption that that property now is right-of-way, there is no question that road has the land that we need. KYTC, knowing that, wrote the email after the meeting with Norton Commons to say affirmatively, "There is no problem with building that intersection, we approve it." Beth Stuber also weighed in, explaining that with existing roadways and intersections, sometimes you cannot meet all the standards, we meet almost all of them, if not most of them. Mr. Agent's report is quite amusing, he talks about duty and requirements, there is no duty, you've not heard from Mr. Baxter or, uh, Mr. Agent, one iota of evidence that says there's a duty to do what he says. We presented the actual regulations that show the grade doesn't need to be changed, our road width is sufficient, KYTC has affirmatively said no left turn is required, they covered it all, the regulations also say the radius is appropriate, they say you can go down preferred to get no lower than sixty, but obviously you can in certain circumstances, ours is at seventy-seven degrees, well within, even with what Mr. Agent says is appropriate, those are the facts on the road, there is only one reason why Norton Commons keeps raising the issue of roads, they are admittedly, there's no contrary evidence that they did not have control over this intersection of the right-of-way, they keep trying to deny it, even with this red herring issue about supposedly Mr. Delaney being able to prevent it with his property going in the roadway at the very last minute, it's not right legally, it's not fair with the last-minute attempt, but it's not right legally, and KYTC has made that clear. Let me talk briefly, because I don't have much time in this closing, about some of the really important points about our subdivision. Your all's future land use map specifically calls for this piece of property, this very piece of property, to be a single-family subdivision, this subdivision is top quality, it preserve, preserves the rural and equine character of your all's county, it provides the homes that your own comprehensive plan absolutely states on this property you need and should have in this high, this high-growth area.
You have twenty seconds.
It also is compliant with the Brownsboro Master Plan, we provide all of those things, there is a compliance statement that we submitted in the record, we would submit that your all's, we should approve this plan, and the chair's minutes should be based on that compliance statement, except for the changes that we made in the May hearing, from one ninety to one eighty-seven, but this is appropriate plan that should be approved for the benefit of Oldham County, thank you very much.
Thank you. All right, commissioners, uh, let me turn this off here. All right, uh, with that, um, the chair will, uh, ask that the commissioners, we have fifteen minutes for any questions on any part of the docket, I mean, we, you know, we've had traffic discussed this morning, but, uh, this is, yes, uh, this is a continuation hearing, but we, you know, we had a lot of information presented at two previous hearings, so at this time, I will open it up for the commission, if they have any questions to, for either the applicant or the opposition as it relates to, uh, these two dockets, so, is there any questions? Yes, Ms. Jones?
I have a question for you. So if the subdivision is approved, will you all go back to Mr. Delaney and to Norton Commons and attempt to make the improvement?
We're happy to, but the law is clear, uh, Ms. Jones, that we do not have to go back to Mr. Delaney, that property of his has been lost, it is in the right, it is now right-of-way and approved road owned by the state, uh, regarding to Saint Mary's, we're happy if they provided us that road, we would look at those changes, absolutely no question. What we don't want to have is this entire approval and our ability to get building permits based on continued red herring objections from Norton Commons, it's unfair to us, it's not appropriate for Oldham County, we would like you to say that we are based on what KYTC and Jefferson County approve, to decouple their ability to throw every objection under the sun to prevent this development, if they make suggested changes, we will do it, and if the right-of-way is provided, we're happy to make those changes that would be accommodated in any additional right-of-way we're provided.
Thank you.
Any additional questions, Mr. Finney?
I have some questions for Ms. Zimmerman.
Yes, sir.
Report, um, on, I guess it's your original report on, from May, on page two, you have your existing conditions, sixteen ninety-four is a state-maintained road, um, estimated volume thirty-four hundred, uh, speak of the, um, road having two-lane highway, eleven-foot lanes, twelve-foot turn lanes, uh, uh, no center turn, four-foot shoulders, speeds at forty-five mile an hour, you're basically describing the part of the road that's in Jefferson County.
At the intersection of Schuler Lane, correct?
Schuler Lane, yes. Uh, we have no jurisdiction over that at all, really, being, um, um, Oldham County, uh, the planning commission, when you come out of Schuler Lane and you turn a left, would you, uh, describe, um, sixteen ninety-four as you go northbound?
My, um, let's see, I would estimate that to be nine-foot lanes, um, it's probably posted at fifty-five mile an hour, the speed limit changes right at the county line, um, it's not drivable at fifty-five miles an hour, uh, due to the cur, it's not drivable at fifty-five miles an hour due to the curves.
Okay.
On, on sixteen ninety-four.
Shoulders are there?
Minimal, foot or less, I mean, a shoulder technically is the distance from the edge of pavement to the ditch, so, you know, there's two, one to four feet of.
Basically, no shoulders at all?
No, I wouldn't say no, but minimal.
Okay, um, would you, what, describe the topography through there?
Billy?
Kirby?
Okay. Well, not to testify.
I'm, I'm asking questions, are there sharp curves?
Uh, define sharp?
Well, that's.
I mean, right, I don't, I don't, how do I answer, we've, we've had a similar kind of question before, your definition of sharp or steep is not necessarily the same as mine, so.
Yep.
There are curves with posted advisory speeds.
Thank you, um, where does this, um, where does this road terminate?
Where does it terminate? Uh, US forty-two.
Okay, uh, terminates prior to that order?
Uh, there is a stop sign at the intersection of Kentucky three twenty-nine and sixteen ninety-nine.
And when it, when it terminates there, is that, is that a, is that a T or a Y?
It's closer to a Y.
Uh, on, and that would be a, what, a left hand for the Y?
Again, I think it depends on your definition of where, what you're describing, the question would be, in my mind, does sixteen ninety-four come to a ninety-degree angle at three twenty-nine? And that answer is no, I can't tell you the degree at that intersection.
Okay, so, uh, all the school buses and school, school traffic leaving, uh, Schuler Lane area, coming out of Norton Commons and this new subdivision will have to travel sixteen ninety-four north, coming to three twenty-nine, turning left to go to North Oldham Schools, which is a.
Mr. Finney, pardon, is this a question?
Yes.
Okay, 'cause, okay.
That's, that's the path they make today, yes.
Be the path they'd have to make, making that, that difficult left-hand turn there, correct?
I would not describe that as difficult, but yes.
Okay, um, why does, why, why? Why does, why, why, why does your traffic study not bring any of this up, being this is Oldham County Road?
The scope was provided to me by the staff of Oldham County and that was, that intersection was not requested by the staff of Oldham County.
And none of the, none of the conditions of the road from, from Schuler Lane through there was not, not, not a issue?
That was not requested of me.
Thank you very much.
Any additional questions? Ms. Nasser? Is your mic on? Yes, ma'am.
A simple question. So it notes on here.
A little closer, sorry.
It's on here, temporary construction entrance off of Schuler Lane. Will that ultimately become a main entrance to the subdivision?
Krista, if we could pull up our subdivision plan, we'll show where our actual entrance is, if you have our PowerPoint still available? Or the other direction? There it is. So our entrance is, hopefully you can see it on the, on the right, that's where our actual entrance will be.
Where it says temporary construction on the right-hand side.
I mean, I guess that would be, Joe, do you have any thoughts on the temporary construction entrance? That's our main entrance and will also be temporary, is that right?
If you need to come up, get it off the microphone, please.
Yes, that will be our permanent entrance.
Okay, super. And then you might want to stay there. We've seen a lot of variations over this timeframe of the intersection of Schuler and 1694. What is the ultimate proposal at this time, should it be approved? Is it going to be a three lane or is it with, with one of those being a turn?
1694 will provide a left turn lane in onto Schuler.
Okay, anything else, Ms. Nasser? Okay, any additional questions for either applicant or opposition? Ms. Davis? Your mic on, ma'am?
Is there only one entrance into the subdivision?
There are actually three. There's an entrance here. There's a connection to Norton Commons here. And there's a connection up here to Phase One of Sanctuary Falls.
Right, thank you.
And Phase One obviously has its own entrance as well, Ms. Davis.
Any additional questions? Additional questions from the Commission? Okay, seen none at this point. The docket PG 22014 and PG 22015 are now closed. And I would, at this point, let's see, Mr. Fisher, I guess, the, well, let me just say, the first thing that we will consider is the docket PG 22014, which is the application from Clayton Properties Group, Inc. for approval of a zoning map amendment on approximately 109.4 acres. The property is located at 5601 and 5621 South Highway 1694, Schuler Lane Prospect. The proposed change is from AG Agricultural Residential District to R2 Residential District. And this is a continuation from the May 24th meeting. So we will consider the zoning change request first, and this is a request that will go to the Fiscal Court of Oldham County for consideration. So we'll consider that first, and then depending on the outcome of that, then we'll consider docket PG 22015. So Commissioners, do you have a motion that you want to bring forward at this point for consideration on the zoning map amendment request? Mr. King, okay?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I would like to move for approval of the zoning map amendment as requested based on testimony and evidence presented. I find that it complies with objectives of the comprehensive plan. I'll cite the applicant's submittal and that connection. And I don't believe I have anything additional to add to that.
Mr. Carter, is that an adequate motion?
Nothing to add.
Repeat that.
So, once again, I move for approval of the zoning map amendment as presented based on testimony and evidence presented. I find it in compliance with the objectives of the comprehensive plan, and I'll incorporate those references provided in applicant's submittal.
Yes.
Okay, adequate motion. We have a second. Okay, Ms. Davis, I saw your hand first, so. All right, now, any discussion? And, you know, this, there's no binding elements attached, you know, with this zoning amendment. So those, you know, once we vote on this, then if it's an affirmative vote, then we'll discuss the proposed binding elements on the preliminary plan. So at this point, is there any discussion on the motion to approve, which would be a recommendation to Fiscal Court on docket PG 22014, which is a zoning map amendment on 109.4 acres from AG Residential to R2 Residential District? Any discussion? Okay, seen none. I'll ask Ms. Edgar if you would, to take the vote, and this is a motion to approve the zoning map amendment.
Ms. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Finney?
Yes.
Mr. Halfling?
Yes.
Mr. Hampton? Ms. Jones? Mr. King?
Yes.
Mr. Klingemfuss? Ms. Nasser?
I'm sorry? Yep. All right, Marsh.
And Mr. Marsh?
Not voting.
He's present, not voting, so he's not voting.
He counts, yes.
Well, he's, he didn't abstain.
That's right. If you're present, not, his vote goes to the majority.
Well, are you sure about that? Okay, you're our counsel, so, all right.
I've been trying to get this court to there forever.
Okay, all right. What counsel says that your vote will be?
Thank you.
In the affirmative, okay. All right, the, on docket PG 22014, which is a zoning map amendment request, which will go to Fiscal Court, the vote is eight in favor, one opposed. So the motion in the zoning map amendment request is approved. With that, I'll call on Mr. Fisher at this point, if you would, to outline the proposed binding elements on docket PG 22015, which is the application for Clayton Properties for the approval of the preliminary subdivision plan for 187 lots on approximately 109.4 acres to be known as Sanctuary Falls Phase Two. The property is located at 5601 and 5621 South Highway 1694, Schuler Lane Prospect. The proposed zoning is R2 Residential, and it was continued from our May 24th, 2022 meeting. Mr. Fisher?
All right, once again, Ryan Fisher, Senior Planner, Oldham County Planning and Development. So the proposed binding elements on this, the approval applies only to the plan presented at the August 23rd, 2022 Oldham County Planning Commission public hearings. No lot shall have any backyards facing Schuler Lane. The applicant shall submit a landscape plan for approval by the Planning Commission staff prior to recording of the record plat. A four-board black horse fence shall be built and maintained along Schuler Lane. Before any permit is requested, the developer shall work with Louisville Metro Emergency Services and Oldham County Emergency Management to prevent any issues regarding emergency services dispatch and response, including any CAD issues. There shall be no exterior construction activity on the project or deliveries to the site between the hours of 8:00 PM and 7:00 AM on weekdays and 4:00 PM to 9:00 AM on weekends. No trash or construction debris removal between the hours of 6:00 PM and 8:00 AM. They shall submit a lighting plan, including all exterior lighting, and that is all listed in there as well. There shall be no subdivision of, there shall be no subdivision of any lot into a greater number of lots without review by the Oldham County Planning Commission. The cumulative phasing plan shall limit the number of dwelling units to 35 per year, beginning with the first record plat. The preliminary plan must comply with all established federal, state, and county ordinances and requirements at the time of construction plan approval. No utility or streetlight poles shall be along Schuler Lane except for the length of Schuler Lane from Highway 1694 to just past St. Mary Academy School. No construction vehicles for deliveries will use Moser Farm Road, Laurel Lane, Worthington Lane, or Hounds Lane to access this development. And then also, we would look to put a binding element in there for verification from KYTC that there is adequate right of way for the improvements as proposed in that area.
Okay. All right, Commissioners, is there any additional binding elements that you would want to consider on this docket? Any additional binding elements? Mr. Solomon, do we, the only other one that we had discussed a little bit as far as staff was a, about the right of way be resolved before construction plans are approved?
And that is what Ryan just mentioned to add, and just for KYTC verification.
Okay, all right. Could we add just for, before construction plan approval on that, just so it's clear, you know, as far as the right of way be resolved? And Mr. Calvert, would you all be in agreement to that? That the right of way be resolved before construction plans are approved? Is that something that you all would consider?
Our thought, Mr. Chairman, is that the road should be decoupled from, from the approval and our ability to get building permits, and here's why. Jefferson County and KYTC obviously have the jurisdiction. There's little doubt that Norton Commons will continue to raise issues. We don't think there's any basis for that, but we don't want to be caught in a situation where they have effectively control over timing, and timing is really, controls all of these things. So what we would like to do is just have it, the binding element, that the approval, if we get approval from KYTC and Jefferson County, that we can move forward, as simple as that. The right of way, we're assuming we can't get it from St. Mary's, but if we do, we will submit those changes. We, you could put that in the, in the binding element. And then the part about Mr. Delaney, he's got no right, there is no right of way issue there, there simply is not.
Okay, all right, and Mr. Solomon, could you elaborate a little bit on that?
Just to clarify, the intent of the binding element that was proposed, the additional one, was specifically regarding the corner, the Delaney corner, where there was potentially at the skewed intersection, the property line going out into the pavement. We just want confirmation from KYTC that that is not an issue with the intersection. It was specifically that corner.
And you think that Ryan's elaboration of that is adequate?
Let me look at it again.
Okay.
I think so, because that's the only area where the existing pavement potentially encroached on other, other property.
All right, Commissioners, are you all okay with the outline of the, Mr. Calvert, do you want to?
Yeah, I just want to make sure. I think we've got just a semantical issue. If KYTC approves the intersection, I think that means they've approved and cleared up the right of way issue. So I just want to make sure, if we could say it that way, it'd probably be the cleanest way to make it clear.
Mr. Carter, do you agree with that?
Yes.
Let's state this once more for the record, what that binding element contains, please.
Fisher, if you would?
So that binding element would be the verification from KYTC that there is adequate right of way for the improvements as proposed at that intersection there of Schuler Lane and 1694, prior to any construction plan approval.
Did that clarify it for you, Mr. King? You all are good with that? Okay, so, well, I won't ask you to come back, but, okay, sorry, just to get it on the record.
Yes, we agree with that.
Okay, all right. Okay, Commissioners, you've heard the outline of the proposed binding elements. The Chairman now entertain a motion on docket, right docket here, PG 22015, which is the preliminary plan approval. We have a motion. Have a motion.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. King, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'll move for approval of the preliminary subdivision plan presented based on testimony and evidence presented. I find it in compliance with the objectives of the comprehensive planning zoning ordinance. I will incorporate the binding elements as previously stated into my motion.
Okay, Mr. Carter, is that an adequate motion, sir?
Yes.
Okay, do we have a second?
Second.
A seconds? All right, any discussion on the motion to approve the preliminary plan with the attached binding elements on docket PG 22015? Any discussion? Okay, seen none. We will now proceed to vote, Ms. Edgar, on the docket PG 22015. And this is a motion to approve the preliminary subdivision plan for 187 lots on approximately 109.4 acres to be known as Sanctuary Falls Phase Two.
Ms. Nasser? Mr. King?
Yes.
Mr. Klingemfuss? Ms. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Hampton? Mr. Halfling? Finney?
Yes.
Ms. Davis? Mr. Marsh?
Not voting.
Let me, let me ask counsel, is, he said he's not voting, does that mean? Okay, all right. So the vote on, to, for the preliminary subdivision plan on docket PG 22015 has been approved on a vote of eight to one. So Commissioners, with that, let's see, I guess, Mr. Fisher, do you want to, I think we don't have anything under other business, but we might want to announce that SRC will not be meeting on Thursday night, correct?
Yeah, that's correct. And then obviously, filing deadline is August 31st. As of right now, there isn't anything, but I want to back myself in the corner and tell you you're not meeting yet. So we have until August 31st, and I'll send you all an email. That's okay.
Commissioners, I think we've done before, a little before 11 o'clock here. So thank you all for your attendance today, and we look forward to maybe seeing you next month. If not, we'll see you the following month. So at this point, we stand adjourned.